Well, I'm looking north and I see some people. Why don't you tell us about yourself, sir?
Well, thank you, and thanks for the invite. My name is Al Boussan, the CEO and manager of the Look North Initiative for the Communities Economic Development Fund. I am going to start my stopwatch here because I was told by Jim a few times that make sure I keep this within 15 minutes. So I plan to do just that. Now, I think, oh, and behind me by way is Jim, Jim and Shannon, I think everyone knows Jim as well. And these two individuals are one of seven people we just hired for Look North back in September. So I just wanted to take the time just to talk about CDF, but more specifically about Look North. I think there's some here that know a little bit about CDF. But in regards to Look North, and we have some sub paths out there for information. Look North, to put in a nutshell, is the Province of Manitoba's Norn Economic Development Strategy. CDF, the Communities Economic Development Fund, has been tasked to deliver on the Look North Report and Action Plan. Not to go into the details of the actual report. It could also be found on our website at www.cdf.mb.ca. It goes into the full report, which it talks about the process that we've gone through over the last two years when it comes to the community engagement and really fleshing out what we felt were the areas of focus when it comes to trying to encourage economic development in the north. The Look North region is basically Norn, Manitoba. It covers approximately 52 communities, of which 28 are First Nation, 13 are Indigenous and Norn relations communities, and 11 are urban industrial communities. So those are the Town of DePauw, Thompson, Flintflon, Churchill, those communities. So why I'm here is to basically just to introduce Look North, talk about how we hopefully want to work with Mayor and Council in regards to delivering the program and how we also plan to work with our other stakeholders as well. So I also have, and which I missed, I also have a copy of, I was, I want to make sure, I had a quarter screen that I was gonna bring in, but they said the room may not be conducive to that. I was gonna do a PowerPoint presentation, but instead I decided more just print it out for you guys and just to go through it. So when it comes to CDF's mandate, our mandate is to coordinate economic development programming in Norn, Manitoba, and to lead the implementation of Look North. CDF is the Province of Manitoba's Norn Economic Development Partner. We are one of seven partners. There's four geographical partners, one EEDW, which is the Economic Development Windbag. We have the capital region, we have the rural organization that's being formed, of course, up north, we have CDF. So basically what that entails is that anything when it comes to economic development that is being supported by the province needs to pass through CDF either by just us being aware of it or us helping to facilitate it. The province, by having us as the Norn partner, really has a focus on these seven organizations being the main vehicle for economic development. When we talk about economic development, we're talking about a movement. And that's what Look North for the most part is about, is helping to create that culture of commerce. And it is also to build capacity as well. In Dunes, so we are going to be working with the local CFTCs, we want to work with the town offices, we want to work with any other stakeholders when it comes to trying to help startup enterprises and when it comes to trying to expand existing businesses. On slide four, you'll notice that we have six areas of focus. One is Norn mineral and other resources. Those is commercial fishing, forestry, and tourism as well. Those are areas that we're going to focus to see what are the various barriers in regards to encouraging economic development in those areas. We also talk about Indigenous engagement and partnerships. That's more of a foundational approach to our program delivery, recognizing in Norn, Manitoba, we have a number of First Nations and we have a large Indigenous population. And we want to make sure any program that's done is in line with working with the various groups and other interested stakeholders. We also talk about strategic infrastructure. And in that regard, we're more focused on helping to look at things like the expansion of broadband, high-speed internet. We're looking at trying to have better access to resources such as forestry or commercial fishing. We did have on there the poor port of Churchill, which has more or less seems to have resolved itself. We also have on there the enterprise ecosystem. And that's really when we provide that wraparound service for people who are looking at starting or expanding their business. And for that reason, we have Jim and Shannon. Jim is our rep for the Town of DePauw, Shannon is our rep for OCN. The plan is to have them be the first point of contact for people looking at starting or expanding their business. And we, of course, will be working with our stakeholders, with the CFTCs, with First People's Economic Growth Fund, with Futurepreneur, all of those other organizations are involved in economic development. And lastly, we are focused on education as well. We're going to be doing a lot of work with programs like Junior Achievement. We'll be working with Frontier School Division. We want to try and put into schools from K to nine more exposure to the whole idea of self-employment. So we start to plant that seed at a much more earlier age. The one thing about Junior Achievement, they do need some resources by boots in the ground and that's where our seven Look North staff will be helping out with. Our guiding principles for program delivery, I just wanted to touch on a few of them. One, of course, has to be based on what the needs of the community is. We're not going to be using a one approach to all communities. We know that each community is based on what resources they have locally, what interests they have will shape how we plan to deliver our program. We need to build awareness when it comes to self-employment and that culture of commerce we talked about. And as I said, by going into schools and going into organizations like UCN to talk to the young people. It has to be capacity focused. We're well aware that once you get that interest and that awareness, there's also the challenges when it comes to what are the ABCs of starting a business. But more importantly, how do you make sure it's sustained for the long term? So those are the kind of supports we plan to provide. It needs to be complementary, complementary in that one thing that the province has stated, as we talked to them over the last couple of years, we do not want to be coming into a community and running parallel services for what's already there. We want to make sure we do a good assessment of what are the current assets in the community, whether it's a CFTC, whether it's local EDOs, whether it's a local CDC, to see what they are readily doing. And based on what we feel are the needs and what those gaps are, we want to make sure we work with the existing stakeholders, work with the existing resources to see what's the best use of Look North. We've been here for the whole day and we've been talking to various stakeholders, finding out what they are doing right now and find out what they feel are the needs. So there is a lot of needs out there. We definitely don't want to waste our time doing things that are already being done. But at the same time, we need to recognize what those gaps are. So that's what Look North's focus will be. It definitely has to be flexible and multifaceted. What I mean by that is that when we talk about starting up a business, the traditional definition is some business that's on Main Street. And we recognize that there are some communities that don't have places that you can have a commercial space rented. Quite often, they could be home-based businesses. There could be some areas where social enterprises are a better approach to addressing local gaps. We talked about co-ops as well, or you can be talking about groups. As long as it results in economic activity and as long as to address a current gap in service or product, that's what our main focus is. So we want to use all the tools and toolbox when it comes to the various ways to approach economic development. And of course, we want to do it with a team and stakeholder approach. Once again, as I say, talking to the local CFTCs, the local leadership, to find out what they're doing right now, what they feel their needs are, and then to see what's the best way to have Look North fit that need. So right now, the action plan to date is to implement Look North, which we have done. We hired our seven staff people back in September. We're currently in the process of having them come out to the communities, talk to the mayors and councils and chief and councils, finding out, you know, who are their main contact and what are the needs in the community. We are looking at promoting the region as an opportunity for business. For too long, Northerners tend to not look, I think, as much about the positive things that are happening in their community. Not to say that we have our challenges, but I think we need to do a better job of promoting local assets. And that's what Look North is about as well. We want to provide the access to regional and economic information, and that's what our staff is here for. We see ourselves as a mall where people would come to access the various different services. So in that mall, you could have different funding programs, different resources when it comes to try to start your business or expand your business. So we want to end the confusion that people have when it comes to not knowing where to go, who to talk to, how does one program fit for the other program. We've seen that for too long and we want to try and streamline these. So the plan is to have Look North be the first point of contact along with working with your local CFTCs, your local EDOs, and to make sure we make it as painless as possible for people who are starting, trying to start or expand their business. Of course, we want to build a capacity, engage with communities. There are some communities that don't have their local strategic plan. We want to work with those mayors and councils and chief and councils to make sure that every community does have some focus. We know that these plans will evolve and we know they'll change. But one thing that we've always known that you do need to have something on paper so it helps to give you some direction. If you don't do that, you're always in a state of reactive when it comes to trying to make a decision on things. We need to get more proactive and that's where I think local strategic plans are important. And of course, offering our business concierge services, and I'll talk about that right towards the end. So our progress to date, say, we've deployed our staff. We have developed our communication strategy and our marketing plan. We have a really nice video, if you ever go to cdf.mb.ca, where it's a little bit of a branding video. It kind of focuses on what we feel are the opportunities in the north. And I would encourage people to view that video. We, of course, are collaborating and coordinating with our partners, our stakeholders. We're meeting with them all the time and we continue to continue with those meetings to make sure that, you know, how we approach our business is in a coordinated fashion. And we are developing two resource optimization strategies, one in commercial fishing, one in forestry. Those should be done by March, April of next year. And the plan is to use that as a little bit of a blueprint for when we try to encourage local microenterprises in those industries. We are, of course, in the midst of introducing our services. And we will be doing some training programs in the new year, one each in the four industries I mentioned, forestry, fishing, commercial, tourism, and mining. And of course, establishing our concierge services. And those are outlined at the next slide on Slide eight. And basically, it's a lot of what I just finished talking about, communication and marketing, helping to support local business startups and expansion. We know that over 90% of investment in a community will come from local residents or local businesses. So we want to try and encourage those types of investments. So finally, in regards to our key focus, CDF become the key contact points through Look North for small business in the north looking to grow and scale, to connect investors and businesses, direct entrepreneurs to market information, of course, build capacity, and to support innovation. Our points of contact for the Town of DePauw, as I mentioned, is Jim. And Shannon is in the same office as well. We have our seven staff are both functional and geographical assignments. But at the same time, they work as a team. So if Jim is non-existent available, Shannon's available, and vice versa. We have one staff in Flintflon as well, and we have three in Thompson. So in saying that, I'm about a minute and 18 seconds over my 15 minutes to talk as fast as I could. I just want to ask if there's any questions.
Trevor, you have one?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I know you've just been started a little while ago, but is there any priority area you have here that you're gonna start with first? Or is it more you're waiting for the people to kind of approach you guys? What's the, like, I mean, I know you say you're kind of working with schools and trying to get that culture of working together. But like, for example, and again, I don't want to come off as being negative, but like housing challenges and opportunities, how would that, you know? I guess some of these, I'm kind of confused as to how you would tackle some of these because these are not, these are big, big.
They're big. It's not an issue of like the tail wagging the dog when it comes to housing. We recognize that housing is a huge issue. And we are, when we mention housing, it's more from economic development. We know that not as much in the Town of DePauw, but there are some communities where if they don't have places where they can rent space, a lot of the potential for business startups are home-based. But yet, if a community has a lot of Manitoba housing units, the concern there by people who might want to start a business would be either their rental increase because, of course, it's a result of a percentage of your income, or they feel at times that they may not be able to start a business by risk of being evicted. So when we talk about housing, what we've been doing is more from a lobbying point of view, is to talk about how do we address some of these challenges with housing from an economic development, from a policy angle in some cases. So when we talk about these services, there's going to be some that relate to you guys and there'll be some that won't. You asked, first part of your question was, how do we plan to approach each community?
I guess, for instance, you know, one of the issues are, it's expensive to build in a, right? So are you guys, do you provide services where you'd approach a contractor and say, hey, listen, I'll see if I can get some capital cost to help you start this off so you don't have to own the building for, have a mortgage on it for 40 years before you make any money? So it's profitable that way? So they're getting government grants or is it? I was kind of confused as the, with the housing.
Yeah, see, in the housing part, we would not be looking as much at that in regards to increasing the supply of housing stock. What we would look at housing is in the area where housing or the policies behind housing is restricted towards the growth of economic activity. But when it comes to the Town of DePauw, what we want to do, and we met with the CFTC as well as our stakeholders, we want to find out, okay, what's the best way for us to provide our services to people who may be looking at starting a business or are having some options to expand their business? We know that there's a lot that we can do with the young population. We did a presentation at UCN this morning. And we talked about, okay, there is the option, of course, to be employed by someone, but also are there ways to use the education we're having to look at self-employment? So our main focus really is a lot of capacity building in areas where we think there is need. But more importantly, to be there as information for someone when they want to try and access either financing or to know what the access to capital options are or what are some of the training options when they're looking at starting a business. So in that way, it's multifaceted. But it has to be driven by what that local need is and it has to be driven by what things are not being currently done by existing resources.
So going forward, you folks will be the lead agency, CDF?
Yeah.
So how does that relate to some of the other organizations like the Sector Council or TPCRC or some of these other groups that are doing similar work but in different areas? How, what happens to them?
Yeah, well, you know what? We, we're trying to meet with almost every organization. We're just in the process right now. We know we're far from being completed. But our plan is to communicate with every organization, say, okay, basically, when it comes to the area of economic development, what are you doing in this area? What do you feel are the needs? Are these needs potentially filled by Look North and its resources? Or is it something that we have to lobby? Because the one thing I will say with Look North is that I don't expect it just to be information flowing from top down. It also has to be used to flow information from bottom up. We need to recognize the fact that if there are gaps that the government needs to play a role in, that Look North is used as that lobbying organization through CDF. So to answer your question, we want to work in a complementary role with the existing resources. As I said, our place is not to try and trip over each other. We need, to do that though, we need to get as much information about what everyone else is doing and see what they feel is the best role for us, so.
Do you guys, and I'm an R, I don't know a lot of what you guys do or have done in the past, but is there money, like, is there, do you guys have? Or you just kind of link the person to the capital? Or is there a, I don't know, like, is there, yeah, sure, Trevor, there's a $10,000 there possibly for that?
Great question because actually gives me an intro to talk a little bit more about CDF and its background. For those that don't know as much about CDF, we were formed back in 1972, so we're about 48 years old now. Historically, we've been a lender. Our two main services has been business and our commercial fish loans. During that time period, I think we've done about 260 million in loans to various industries. Right now, our commercial fishing loan, we do about 3 million a year. With our business loan, we've been under moratorium for the last couple of years. And that mostly had to do with the fact that when the government came in, they want to show who was doing what and what was the best use of taxpayers' funds. So what we were asked was to do, have a moratorium on our business loan. Through our mandate letter in March, the board was asked to do a board-led review of our loans program. That was completed. The recommendation has been put forward back to government back in July. We will be having a meeting in two weeks' time to discuss the recommendation. In a nutshell, the board has recommended that our moratorium be lifted. There has been some recommendation for some changes. We used to lend up to 2 million. There's a feeling that, you know, we may want to cap that at 1 million. There's also a recommendation that we only lend to the Look North region. Before our business loans went as far down south as Brandon and so on, if you were an Indigenous business owner, we are now looking at just having our loan just in that, in that Norn region. So I'm hoping to hear back in the short little time about our lending program for business, but our fish loans are still intact. But further, yes, when you talk about steering people to other sources of funding, we know that by working with our stakeholders, there are funding options through the Windbag Enterprise or Women's Enterprise Center, Futurepreneur, FSP, People's Economic Growth Fund. I'm meeting with Futurepreneur next Tuesday about some options for them to expand their services. We know we have a large youth population. And Futurepreneur's definition of youth is anyone under 40. So we know that there is some good, good options there. So, yeah, but yeah, we are looking at starting up our own business loans again, but at the same time to steer people to existing programs.
Has the province committed to a multi-year funding of the program?
We have through WD, a three-year commitment for Look North. The province is year to year, but that's with all of their programming. I don't anticipate, since Look North has been accepted by the province as their Norn Economic Development Strategy, I don't see them not doing multiple funding, especially when that funding has leveraged federal funding. So I see it being as least for the next three years, you know, starting this current year. I see the main thing with Look North is the capacity building by way of having our additional staff.
So is your, is your main funder WD right now?
It's half and half.
Yeah?
Yeah, I mean, we have, our, we are funding as work. We have like core funding, which is mostly for our loan program. Even though we haven't been able to lend for business, we still have a business loan portfolio of about 19 million. Our commercial fish loan portfolio is about 12 million. So we have about a $30 million portfolio, which we have to manage. In fact, managing the portfolio takes a lot more resources than approving loans, right? So that's our core funding. And then we have on top of that some additional funding from the province for Look North that has been matched by the feds.
So your seven additional staff, the province is funding them?
Both provincial and the feds with their two pools of funding is funding our additional staff. And just to give you guys a frame of reference, we actually doubled in size. Our staffing number up until this summer was seven. We are now 14. So I think it shows the commitment for Look North and it shows the feeling that, you know, the strategy we have through the Look North Report and Action Plan is the way to go. So we want to make sure we do the best job at resourcing it.
There's a lot of discussion about a potential oil line to Churchill. You guys flogging that one?
No.
No?
No, we, we've heard, you know, I mean, it's been talked about.
It's been in the National Post and the Financial Times and.
Yeah, I think depending on who you talk to, you're gonna, you're gonna have different views on that. I think if you ask the average Churchillian, they would say they're very much opposed to it.
Really? Do you really think so?
Yeah, there's, as I say, I don't want to speak on behalf of them, but I know from the last time, things like this, but shipping oil on the rail line was discussed. There was pushback because they feel that, you know, now with the poor port of Churchill being reopened and, you know, all the jobs that that might create, there has been some, I think, softening of position. some, I think, softening of position, but I think there's also some that feel that it may put some of their tourism, tourism industry at risk as well, too. So as I said, it depends on who, who you talk to. At the end of the day, you know, the decision will, will be made by people above my pay limits, so I, I can just, I can just, just make guesses.
Yeah, it'll, it'll never fly if it doesn't receive local support, though.
Yeah, and as I say, I, I think a lot of it really is how you, you, you package it and sell it. You know what? I, I think if people roll up their sleeves and, and if they talk to each other and if they look at what people's concerns are and they express, okay, this is how we're going to address it, I think it will, it has a better chance. If people start to put themselves in, in groups and stop listening and talking to each other, I think it's going to be a lot more of a challenge. With, with Look North, I mean, we are, our main thing, our first step is to just try and keep our mouths closed and listen as much as possible. So we get an idea of flavor of, of what's happening in the communities. We're actually going, going up to Churchill next, next Thursday. I'll be up there and I'll be talking to Mayor and Council and I'm sure I'll get an idea of, you know, some of those discussions there. We've been doing a lot of traveling the last couple of weeks and our main thing is to try and talk to as many communities as possible, especially the larger ones before Christmas, before mid-December, because everything's going to shut down by then, right? And then we'll start back up in January. But yeah, we will be talking to Churchill and we'll be saying the same thing to them. What is, what are some options for us to work with you guys? With Look North, we don't, we don't take a position. I think that's wrong. I think it's up to the local community to drive that. Our job really is to work with what we got, right? So we just need to know what the red lights are and what the green lights are, who's doing what, when, who wants to not have you involved, who wants to have you involved and what's the best way for us to know.
You touched on forestry there briefly?
Yeah.
So we, we obviously have a strong interest in forestry in our community. Are you in conversations with CKPI at all or?
Yeah, we're having a conference call with them. We're trying to do it for next week, hopefully next, next week, yeah. Our initial approach with forestry is more to look at in the area of non-timber forest products and what are some of the micro enterprises that we can start up.
Okay.
Now, we do know that through Canadian Craft Paper Company and the First Nation Partnership, you know, they have certain cutting rights, mostly a lot of the, the softwood. And, but our angle right now until we see how we can best work with them is we know each community has their own resource area. We know that there are some micro enterprises that can be started up that are totally even outside of normal forestry and more aimed towards, you know, as I say, non-timber forest products, value-added initiatives, you know, even if we look at, you know, biomass and what are some of the options out there, right? But we, we want to, to work with them and once again, want them to tell us what the red lights are so we know we don't go in that area and, you know, what stuff that we can work on. One of the strategic plans that I mentioned is focused on forestry and is focused on a community-based approach on what are some of the micro enterprises that, that a community can have their, their members pursue based on what the current situation is.
Do you see the PA as a service center for the north?
The PA is, yeah. I, I will say that you, you have the PA, you have Genplon, you have Thompson. These are all regional service centers. I would say, and to a certain extent, you have many service regions. You have Norway House kind of servicing across Lake. You have, so, and even when you look, look at Leaf and Lynn on a much more smaller basis. So the town of the PA, OCN, definitely they get traffic in from neighboring communities. They also get traffic from Thompson and our area, right? One of the challenges we have is due to the transportation corridor. I mean, it's, it's awful that for me to go up to Churchill, I need to fly down to Winnipeg overnight and then fly up to Churchill. It's even worse that for me to go from Thompson to the PA and I was, I hit the road about 5:30 this morning, you know, there's no, if I want to fly, I gotta fly down to Winnipeg and then fly up to the PA. Right now, the transportation restrictions, if anything, is stopping the Norn communities to be more closely aligned. But once again, this is a private sector issue is what they feel at times is what's worthwhile investment and what's not. But I think we have to take a real hard look at how do we better link our communities together. When we talk about tourism, you know, we mentioned that, you know, I use the term, not every community has a polar bear in their backyard. But we do know that you have communities in the north that each have their own local assets, whether it's things like Nickel Days in Thompson, Trappers Festival in, in the town of the PA. You have communities that have their own assets. So part of our strategy under tourism is experiential tourism and we're getting our staff to be trained on that in February. And the plan is to have a lot of the Norn communities each have their own local assets to generate that traffic. And once again, going back to the transportation, for a person to drive eight hours or seven hours from Winnipeg, they need to come to just more than just one attraction. They need to have a multitude of attractions. Right now, the restrictions we have with transportation makes it even more of a challenge for us. So when it comes to tourism, our plan is to try and get as many of these community-based assets going so we can encourage that traffic flow. If we encourage more tourism in the north, I think the private sector will follow. I think there may be more investment when it comes to enhancing our transportation system, but right now we have huge challenges when it comes to linking our major communities together.
Yeah, and fortunately, the, one of your funders can do something about that. The road conditions between the PA and Winnipeg are not the best.
No.
And if you're dragging along a 40 or $50,000 camper, it might not be too appealing to you. So if they want to improve tourism opportunities, they need to start fixing the roads.
Yeah.
So you can pass that on.
Oh, yeah, you know what? It's not, it's not the roads, absolutely things like passing lanes, you know, in the wintertime, basically.
There's a lot of discussion right now about rest stops and the lack thereof.
Yeah.
You know, it, you don't have to travel too far north of Winnipeg to feel like you're the forgotten part of the province. And maybe we can get that message out to them as well.
Yeah, no, and I, you know what? I, I think there's a few people saying that already. As a northerner and as Look North, I think what we have to do is, is continue to lobby, but also show the potential return on investment by way of more tourism attractions. I think if we have more of that, I think it, it makes it a more of an argument. But yeah, I will agree that right now, infrastructure and investment in the north is just not there.
Yeah, sorely lacking.
Yeah.
Cool, well, thank you for coming, folks. Interesting discussion.
Thank you. As Ben said, Jim will be the main contact person, but anytime you want any more discussions, you know, I'm always available as well.
Betcha. Thanks, guys. Alrighty, let's move into log. Finance and admin, payroll and accounts. Hey, does he want to talk to us or you're gonna do it? I see he's sitting there. Go ahead. Dispersment report?
We'll need a resolution for pay period 22 in the amount of $124,737.05. Town of the PA check, general checks in the amount of $189,881.87. EFTs in the amount of $117,825.76, sorry. There was one check for Minister of Finance in the amount of $39,909 and that is town's contribution towards employment and income assistance. Then we don't have our own welfare. We provide the money to the province. There was one for $20,908, AMM Trading Company, that's for fuel. One for, I can't say it again. Thank you, contracting ledited in the amount of $20,454, which is for the limestone, which passed through Resolution 2019-203. That was it. I didn't, there was any other questions? There was no other bigger ones coming out?
Anyone have any questions on what's there?
The only question I did not have, go to check, what is specific, like when you have like chemical suppliers and those big suppliers, how often do we tender that?
Well, it depends. Sometimes there's only one supplier around that. Some of them, any once we deal with, there's nobody else, they just pull all the management over. Just at the mercy. Where we can, we try and tender them.
What, what chemicals do we have, Graham, that there's only one supplier?
I have to check. I just, I know we deal with a few, but we don't have.
Maybe water treatment probably supplies.
Yeah, could we get some info on that? Okay, thank you.
Resolution?
Yep, betcha. Christmas is in the air tonight, Christmas Eve hours.
Council's, in the past, Christmas Eve fell on a week, when, pardon, in the past, when Christmas Eve fell on a weekday, council passed a resolution to close town facilities at noon on the 24th and provide the afternoon off with pay to all employees. If employee was wanting to take the morning off as vacation leave, they were required to take the entire day of their vacation leave. The cost for the town providing this time off would be approximately $5,500. And I've had the union asking me if this was happening.
It's not really a cost though, right? Because if you made everybody work, it's still.
Still pay the 50, right?
It's really a gift, so.
It's a gift, okay.
I, I think it's a good idea.
We need a resolution if council's in favor.
Yep.
And then just chances are, the 27th is a Friday, it will be not short staff, but it'll be bare minimum. If council's aware.
It's just a check, they're, they're kind of out.
Okay, so, resolution?
Yep.
The next one is a request from Amber, the Recreation Director. She's requesting, she's already asked about the 20, we've already dealt with the 24th. She's requesting to close the arena on, sorry, 4:00 PM on New Year's Day, New Year's Eve, Tuesday, December 31st. Traditionally, we close those days early because there's very low or no attendance in all facilities. Currently, our regular bookings are being canceled by user groups and no one is picking up the available times. She's recommending closing the Wellness Centaroy's Johnson Arena, Winting Pool at 12 noon on Tuesday, which council's already approved, will be approving, and 4:00 PM on Tuesday, December 31st. Staff will be rescheduled accordingly to cover the regular hours as we have done in the past and require a resolution to close the facilities for that one as well.
Everybody's good?
Yeah.
All right, rescheduling of the meetings.
The next council meeting is Monday, November 25th, which is AMM. The mayor, councillors Ward and Forester and myself are attending AM. Does council want to reschedule the meeting? And then there's also scheduled council meeting for December 23rd, which is two days before Christmas. I'm not sure if council wants to reschedule that one. I recommend having a November 25th meeting on December 2nd, right after the border revision, and having a December 23rd meeting on December 16th is my recommendation.
Sir, did we not schedule something for December 2nd?
Border revisions. And it was to have Jim Scott attend and we'd done that.
Okay.
And as of right now, for border revision, I have four and the 19th is the deadline for appeals and those haven't been dealt with by the assessment branch, which they may deal with yet, so we may not.
Wow, that's later than I was expecting.
Yeah, so far, they have till the 19th at 4:30 to submit their appeal.
Thoughts on the changes to the meeting dates, guys?
Sure.
Everyone's okay with those?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Resolution will be coming forward for that.
And then now that'll be our only meeting, or no, I'm sorry.
Well, only, well, only, it'll only end up being one for the month of November, which is tonight, and then it'll be just one week after, which would make it December 2nd.
Yep.
And then we're cutting out that week of Christmas.
Okay, commissioners, councillor Ward.
As like I, what you're, as we've discussed several times in the, in the past about bylaws in the community, I think it's time that we move forward and hire in the commissioners. Reason for this being is, is parking, dogs and the bylaws are not being fully administered. And I know that we have off again, on again, somebody doing parking tickets, but if you go through the town and you look, especially over by Kelsey School, they're starting to park up on the boulevard and everything, like parking's going to be a horrendous problem to talk about. The dogs, I think they, they do not a bad job. It's kind of helter-skelter, the same person kind of goes out and does here and there, whatever. But the, the rest of the bylaws are not being administered at all and it's kind of like, if you take a hard look around town and you go around and you look, there's a lot of stuff just isn't being done. And councillor Murphy is also saying about the homes and all that stuff and whatever. And it's just progressively getting worse and worse and worse. So I thought we should just bring that back up and, and put it on the table and I guess it will have, it'll have to be put into the next year's budget, yeah. So just to bring, bring it back to awareness and see if we can get going at it and get it done. And I see further on there, we'll be having a discussion on it.
I, I saw the presentation or whatever before and I, I can't remember if it was in there or not. Is there a, an agreement you signed that you have to, if you do decide to go this route, your three-year commitment or four-year?
Two-year.
Two-years, is it?
Well, in the, in the presentation, it was signed for, it was a two-year agreement, I guess. There wasn't an actual agreement to patch.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm sure there would be a time, I just couldn't remember right there. If it was a two, three, or four minutes.
It's back on the camera.
Yeah, 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 I saw it there.
Okay, so we should get this into the budget discussions.
Right.
Okay, doesn't mean we're doing it, doesn't mean we're not doing it, but we can start having a formal discussion about it.
Right.
Okay, so, budget. Okay, September financial reports. Here we go.
I don't see a lot there that gets me real excited, I don't know about you guys. Any questions based on what you're presenting, presented? I don't see, like, it's been pretty trend set for the whole year so far.
I had a question regarding KRC.
They're still over budget.
Yeah, I know, but my question was, higher than expected and we said summer workers, but I, I thought that, again, I could be wrong, but wasn't there discussions that we didn't get funding so we weren't hiring as many people this year to stay with them, budget?
I don't remember that discussion.
We didn't get some of the grant, what we get.
And also, we would still hire the same number of people even though we didn't get the grant funding? Because I took it as when we didn't get the grant funding, we weren't going to be hiring as many people.
That was greedy.
Yeah, I think there was less hired, yeah.
I know that the department managers are the ones that apply for those funding.
Yeah, and I think, well, I think Amber told us that, I just can't, I couldn't remember. Because when I seen that explanation, what CENE? Because when I seen that explanation, what's C E N E?
Or enter.
Oh, okay. Under KRC, it says summer workers, C E N E, I didn't know what that was.
Yeah, yeah, they have the summer workers working a little bit more in the cemetery and trying to perform some of the things. I know around the Wellness Center, they were doing some big paint jobs and upkeep, and I think some of that overran a little bit.
So a majority of that would have been just labor overruns, then, right?
Yeah.
So is there any suggestions that we can do anything with the recreation to get it back in line, or?
I think it's gonna get worse, based on some of what I'm hearing in comments for payout for a position that ended. And so I suspect this will be in a deficit at the end of the year. Now, overall, for the town, because this is just a department of the town, we're all below budget, so. I mean, ideally, all departments stick within budget, but where the rest of the town can carry the load, that's good to see.
The bottom line is.
No, not necessarily, just, there certainly is some things that weren't done, but more on the capital side than anything.
Well, does that mean?
But that's not reflected here. None of the capital's being reflected here.
Just operations. So at this moment in time, Graham, are we?
I think we're.
Under budget two and a half?
We're, more than that, actually. We're looking at about a ten percent, nine or ten percent under budget overall for the town. However, some of these things are, some of these things run over the year-end, and then they get dated back as part of the accrual. So I suspect that even with the airport and KRC, we're gonna see a small surplus again. But the next couple of months, I'll probably clarify where that really is gonna fall.
I think it's four feet of snow, but every week.
You know, if things hold true to the prior couple of years, I don't see why we wouldn't be able to get there. But we may have unexpected expenses. Again, I know that there's one coming for general, too, whether that settles this year or not. So that could be a significant factor, staffing issue.
So last year, we had a bit of a surplus, right?
Correct.
Hundred K, hundred and five.
It's a hundred, yeah, a hundred and ten something.
So what happened to that now?
Because we have an overall accumulated deficit, or we have had since for a number of years, it helps us to get closer to that zero mark. What our accumulated deficit represents is a cash shortage, based on our responsibilities and what we're putting money aside for. So basically, we're borrowing against reserve funds, and that's how it's reflected on our balance sheet at the end of the year. So we are pretty close to that zero. Again, a couple, a small surplus this year could put us above that, potentially.
Yeah, our normal surplus is a normal deficit.
So an annual surplus is good, but if we have an accumulated deficit.
What caused the deficit?
It was before my time, I'm not sure.
What did you guys spend on?
Was it the ladder, was it the pool roof?
There was the pool roof, it was before my time, too. There was quite, there was quite a large nominal surplus, or accumulated surplus.
I mean, it's gonna be a basis of annual deficits, right? I mean.
I know nine years ago, we had a pretty good nominal surplus.
And then it was drawn down over a number of years.
To keep taxes down.
Yeah, to keep taxes down.
If you're cutting to the bone, you might see a lot more deficits, right?
Accumulated surplus.
Now, I know that KRC and Wellness, after they got pulled in, have been historically underfunded every year, which represents losses every year for the town.
And if we fund them more, then we just have to take it from way for ourselves, right?
Not necessarily. Funding increases your taxes, you increase your taxes, right? So by undercutting, you're just borrowing against funds you have for other purposes when you run those deficits, which is not ideal.
So in corrective measures, improper corrective measures, like your personal budget at home or whatever, what do you suggest that we do coming in our next year's budget?
I think we're doing good. We've made good strides over the last couple of years, slowly correcting that accumulated deficit. Ideally, we hit zero and we continue moving forward. Then we have options available to us to potentially carry forward those surpluses into future years to bring taxes down.
A small nominal surplus yearly doesn't hurt us, you know what I mean? We don't want to go into having huge deficits or huge surplus.
One really bad year could put you back for a few years, right? Especially since typically towns and municipalities do not stockpile money for no purpose at all, which would represent those accumulated surpluses, right?
Yeah, okay. The, what are the rules on the accumulated deficit? How quickly do you have to recover?
Rules that I know of. Ideally, you don't have one. You typically are supposed to try and recover your annual deficits when you have them. Again, before my time, I wasn't partying anymore.
So if we, if we ran a large deficit this year?
We would be looking to recover it next year.
Do you have to cover it the next year, or you couldn't tag it to the nominal and just carry it on?
If you had nominal to tag it to. If you've got a deficit already, an accumulated deficit, you don't have any money there to pull from.
No, I get that, right?
We do, we do this for the utility, I guess. A better example of this is every year I come to you guys, say we ran a utility deficit, and we can draw against our normal.
But they must have had a deficit that they increased.
Sometime, yeah.
So how did they do that?
I don't know. I didn't go back.
If you have to recover it the next year, how do you make that deficit bigger?
Again, before my time.
Is there any legislation about that?
I'd have to look into it for you.
But I guess you'd have to have enough, if everything was dissolved, you'd have to have enough to make sure you pay your bills.
I guess you'd be at two bad years, right? So you have a deficit, you're carrying that forward, and then darn it, you got another deficit. Even though you tried to recover it, you had a worse one. And the next year, and it gets bigger.
I mean, the other thing to factor in here is our reserves, right? So at the end of the day, our reserves represent money that's just ours, right? Now, it's being allocated to a purpose in the future, but if the town were ever dissolved, that money would belong to the town and would represent part of its overall surplus. But you can't use it for this purpose or include it as part of the accumulated surplus for this purpose.
I'm trying to just to get the score in my head, but they seem to have evaded the rules by carrying those large deficits.
More than one year.
But if, because if we have to plan for a zero budget, right? And we have a bad year, and now we have a deficit. So next year, we plan again for a zero budget, but we have another bad year, and we're just adding to that deficit.
No, I know where you're coming from. Again, I didn't spend any time going into the prime years before my time. I had enough catch-up to do.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about the rules.
Well, there's no such thing as a nominal surplus anymore.
Well, the reason, currently, we have a nominal deficit.
Yeah, but you, but there is no nominal surplus.
No, there is, because if we have a surplus this year, next year, we're gonna have a nominal surplus.
We would, we would have an accumulated surplus.
Accumulated surplus.
Yeah, but you can't, but before, there used to be a nominal surplus, you had to keep.
There was an accumulated surplus that was drawn down over a number of years. Like, I believe, like, the last time you guys were in council, there was quite a large accumulated surplus, and it was drawn down over those four years.
Yeah, but see, the nominal surplus, nominal surplus had to remain at a certain percentage to cover your overall. You couldn't draw it down by a certain percentage.
You could draw it down.
No, but there were rules.
But they were pretty vague, the rules.
No, I thought, I thought there were.
If we ran, if we ran a nominal surplus of five hundred thousand dollars this year, we could use, we could draw that down next year.
Yeah, you could, but you couldn't draw it down, you had to have a certain amount left. Anyway, the CFO at the time, whether, I didn't look and see it documented, but it was said that there had to be a certain percentage there to offset certain. But we had also drawn out some, because again, it's usually a sign of not necessarily great budgeting, but just the things that you didn't get done.
Didn't get done, or whatever.
And again, the other thing that happened here was, we drew in the Wellness Center and KRC, and that may have affected the whole town in a negative way, which would have represented an actual loss, but it would have affected the accumulated surplus in the year they were folded in. So you wouldn't have a nominal deficit that year, but you could have built up your accumulated surplus. Now, in my mind, I'm thinking that's probably what happened when they did the combination. You know, I could settle this, and I could probably find out and give you that information. It's not, it's not a real big deal.
The other question I had for you, holiday time, the liability, where does it appear in here?
Payables.
It's in the payables?
Correct.
So all the staff holidays that they haven't taken yet that they hold them for?
This is a bit of a loaded question, because there was some inconsistencies in the way of the manager's time is being recorded. I brought this up a number of times, and it was dismissed, but there is probably some unrecorded liability there.
How do we get it recorded?
I would need that information to be presented to me, so I can include it in the books.
Okay.
I would like to see that on the books in the future.
Yeah, me too. Something that's surprising.
I'm sure it would.
By your practice. I'm not sure if that's.
That's a hundred drink.
Today's Tuesday, huh?
Yeah. It's a hundred drink.
Okay. Cool, any other questions for Graham?
Resolution?
Yep, resolution, come forward. Deletions to property tax.
Another one.
Big one.
Yeah, I'm not going to go into all the detail, which, well, I guess, okay. Every year, the Swan River Assessment Branch provides me staff municipalities with additions and deletions to the tax rule, and council must pass a resolution accepting these changes. Following deletions is for twenty nineteen tax rule as of November fifth, twenty nineteen, and it should be, I'm not gonna promise, but it's gonna, hopefully will be the last one.
They're running out of time.
They're running out of time, exactly. The total diff, or sorry, twenty nineteen deletion in the amount of twenty-seven dollars. The total difference to date is still an increase in the assessment rule on the amount of fourteen thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars. Tatch is more detailed explanation, revised tax bills will be sent out, and I just need a reservation.
So we're still on a good side here.
Is that a normal number, like, when you have this? Is that typically around a normal amount?
They're doing some housekeeping.
Yeah, it's.
I just hope we can make payroll next month, but.
Pay those taxes. Okay, resolution? Four eighth, the letter, that's more for information, isn't it, or?
It's for information if council wants to provide. The Kelsey School Division Board Trustees has accepted the retirement notice of Superintendent and Chief Executive Officer, effective July thirty-first, twenty twenty. The initiative, sorry, initiating, they are initiating the process of recruiting a new superintendent, CEO. They would like, pardon me, they would like feedback to the board trustees on any priorities on which council would like the board to place emphasis.
I personally, I'd like, like, it would be nice to maybe come up with some goals to send to the school division that we may see fit. I don't know what those, it would be nice to be able to have a candid conversation about some things that the town could send over, that could be priorities for the new superintendent, working with the board, but yeah, that's my thoughts on it.
Cut taxes?
Cut taxes, save some money, save some money, maybe.
Reduce costs.
Reduce costs, building costs are, there's a lot of costs that the school division has that could maybe be trimmed down.
Send the letter?
Yeah.
Cut taxes, save money, reduce costs. I'll put it nicely. Fancy.
Okey-dokey, Derek Building, councillor Murphy.
Yeah, so again, sort of follow-up on Bill there. So we've been talking about this issue over the last year that I've been around, and from what I understand, it's been talked about the last number of years. And so I went through the bylaw, and, you know, I think there's some easy, there'd be some easy, really standout places or areas that needed attention, and I could, you know, and I think that we all know where most of those are. So when I went through this, the spot that I seen is that unsightly property, the designated officer. So who is the designated officer on, for the Town of the Paw?
I would have to find the bylaw, but there's a number of managers that are appointed the designated officer.
So to simplify it, I know that it's probably not this easy, but couldn't we just have whoever a designated officer is go do a quick, spend an afternoon dragging around town, taking pictures, and then just take these letters and start sending them out and saying, hey, you got till this day to do something, and if not, we're gonna do something with it?
That's council's direction. We can get some of your.
Well, I'm just, I mean, I think we all agree that we don't want these buildings here.
I would go further and maybe suggest that our building inspector, because some of these buildings may not only be just unsightly, but maybe a hazard to anybody that's either living in there.
Oh, we hear, yeah, there is people supposedly living in some of these places that are not supposed to be living in.
Yeah.
And I agree with you, Trevor, that maybe a good for building inspector, they do have enough here, but if he's a designated officer.
Yes, yes.
So I would like to see that go forward.
Designated officer means a building inspector, so, and he's a building inspector, so.
Yeah, I, we can get some movement on this issue, by all means.
And then when, it's, I mean, kind of further, if he's wondering what, I mean, whether to send letters out or whatever, and then we can deal with the fact that the issue of getting rid of the building itself is cost too much for dumpies, we can address that. We're willing to work with whoever owns it to get it removed.
Well, I think it's clearly outlined in, when I went through this, you know, like, scanned through this, it's clearly outlined what you do and how, and you give him a time and what he needs to do, and if you don't do it, here's the penalty.
Yeah.
And, you know.
Sure, okay, so.
Forced by law, building inspector.
So we'll get this. You don't need a resolution, does it?
No.
Consensus is?
Yeah.
It's enforced by law, basically, so you don't.
And could we maybe get, like, maybe an in-camera update or something, even the start of January or whatever, a couple of months, sixty days down the road, everything?
Why not in December?
I guess, yeah, I don't know, is that enough time to?
Are we, you only have one meeting on December, right? One or two?
December second and December sixteenth.
Okay, so for the sixteenth meeting, let's get an update. By then, he'll have an idea of his game plan.
Yeah.
Sure.
That's it?
That's it.
That's it, we have a few things in camera that.
Getting that in, just a thought, and it was something. In the projects, under, in the projects under O N.
Yep.
Could this be put in there, like this?
That will be on an agenda, I don't.
Okay, so new business next meeting, all that update. That's it, everybody's good?
Yes, sir.
And we go, resolve that.
Come on, Bill.
It's not that easy, is it?
Find it.
Using my line.
Sorry, sorry. Part of it.
That's a person's.
I didn't know I was in the position yet. Resolve that, we now move ourselves into camera portion of the committee, the whole, with Mayor Jake's in the chair to discuss matters requiring our attention.